First meeting of the Easthamfield Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call in information posted on our website. The meeting will be conducted by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded, and Robert's rules apply. To offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people using Zoom, please use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized, the chairman will unmute your microphone, and after speaking, please mute your microphone. Easthamfield's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in Easthamfield to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure already discussed on Zoom. Comment will be limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment where non-agenda items can be addressed. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We will now move on to our first agenda item, and that first item will be, I just want to notify everyone in the room that we had an executive session here tonight with the board that began at 6:20 this evening and lasted until 6:55. Okay? With that, I'd ask all to rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our first agenda item up for consideration this evening is our consent agenda. Consent agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review. Consent agenda items are provided to all board members for review in advance of our meeting. Is there any comment from the board on the consent agenda?
I will be abstaining from item F.
Okay.
And I will be abstaining from item E, since I was not present.
Item E, so we got those on there. Okay. Any comment from the audience about the consent agenda? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda this evening.
I'll entertain that motion for approving the consent agenda for A through D.
A through D. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. On the items A through D, we have a motion from Mr. Russell and a second from Mr. Wigglesworth. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay. And then we have, I'll also entertain a motion to approve item E, which is the minutes of the February 7th 24 meeting as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Russ, I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please say, signify by saying aye.
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 And I will abstain from that, as I was not at that meeting, but I did watch online.
I will abstain as well.
Okay. So that would be three zero. That motion passes. And then finally, on the motion to approve item F, I'll entertain a motion to approve that item.
Cindy, do I need to abstain from this one?
I would suggest you do, yes.
Yes. So I'll be abstaining from this.
Okay. All right. With that, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item F invoices as presented.
Do I hear a second? Second from the chair. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth and a second from the chair. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
With one abstention.
Two.
All right. I'm sorry, two. So that would be three zero. All right. Next up are our action items for tonight. First one is Homestead Village. And who's going to? Mrs. Switzer?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just had a blank moment there. Yes. So Homestead Village is in the process of doing a tax-exempt obligation through the National Financing Authority, which is an authority in New Hampshire. Our authority cannot do that right now because of a pending lawsuit regarding authorities and doing this type of financing approval. It has no impact on township finances. It's simply a formality that needs to happen for the tax code. So what I'd be looking for is a motion from the board to authorize the chair to sign the certificate of approval and move forward with the project. And it's a resolution, I believe, as well.
Okay. All right. With that, is there any comment from the board? Seeing none, any comment from the audience? Again, seeing none. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-06, authorizing the chairman to sign the certificate of approval, which approves the issuance by the National Financial Authority of tax-exempt obligations for Homestead Village Incorporated expansion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Russell. I have a motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Actually, Mr. Ben, I'd like to abstain from that vote. I did not vote on that.
Okay.
Should abstain from that one.
So we're going to make that four zero with one abstention. All right. Next up is the sod farm lease acknowledgement. Mrs. Switzer?
So we have a longstanding lease with Hummer Turf Grass Systems, which farmed the 50 acres of land at the corner of Nolte and Church Street. The Hummer turf system has approached the township and asked to be discontinued that lease. They have found another farm in another location and will be starting their own farm on their own land. What I need is from the township to recognize that to start the clock on the 18 month, which is a required requirement in the lease. His plan is to put a cover crop on it, because most of it right now is bare of turf, cover crop over the spring and summer, and then till that under and then plant grass, at which point it would be my recommendation that the township then take over the lease, or take over the land and take responsibility for it.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Just appreciate the years that they've rented that property and maintained it for us. That was grass that we would have had to mow if they hadn't done that work for us. So they're good service to the township.
Absolutely. Excellent tenant.
Yep. Goes back two generations, and I'm happy for them that they were able to purchase a farm that fits into their business, but they will be missed. They were a good neighbor.
Yep. Absolutely. Any comment from the audience? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the Hummer Turf Grass Systems Incorporated Request to Dissolve the Sod Farm Lease at Nolte and Church Streets no later than August the 12th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. All right. Next up, we have Jacobs Creek Park. Replacement of recreational pieces in the park.
So the township, this park has been in existence since the development has been around Spring Valley. It's off of Bethel Drive. There was pieces of equipment out there. We had to remove them last spring because of deterioration and age. And what I'd like to do now is have the authorization to purchase these two replacement pieces, which mimic what was out there originally.
And was this in the budget for this year? Was?
It was budgeted this year out of the Park and Recreation Fund, yes.
And how do they compare it to budget?
We had $87,000 listed. It came in at $84,000, I believe, and change.
Saving some money. Any other, any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Okay. With that, I'd like a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the purchase of replacement equipment for the Jacobs Creek playground.
So moved.
No. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth.
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Okay. Next up is a special event. Motion for Penn Legacy Soccer. Mrs. Garber, I believe.
Yes, sir. So before you this evening is an application submitted by Penn Legacy to utilize both Amos Hur Park fields for their soccer tournaments, as well as provide traffic control on Junction Road, Lititz Road, Greystone Road, and Landisville Road for soccer tournaments from March through December of 2024. This is an annual request that is received by you. It has been approved in the past with no issues with any of the tournaments or traffic control. All of the field locations, streets, and dates are listed in your packet. I did not list those individually. And if you see fit, it would be staff's recommendation that you approve Penn Legacy Soccer Club's application to utilize Amos Hur Park and provide traffic control with constables on the roadways listed for the dates listed, and that you allow the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification agreement for the 2024 dates and roadways as attached on the application.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comment from the board?
This has been a routine thing that we approved over the years, so.
Longstanding. Any comment from the audience? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the Penn Legacy Soccer Club's application to use Ahur Park and to provide traffic control with constables on Junction, Lititz, Greystone, and Landisville Roads for the various soccer tournaments between March and December of 2024?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Russell, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. I have a motion from Mr. Russell, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next up are board goals. We'll start with Mrs. Switzer on this one.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just get a motion also on the indemnification signing.
I see. Okay. Yes. All right. One more motion that I missed. Our motion to authorize the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for the 2024 dates and roadways as discussed. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second? Second from, second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed, passes five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, board goals.
So board goals, the Board of Supervisors asked me to put this on as an action item in this meeting. Given the fact that we have a room full of people, and I know that they're not here to listen to your goals, I was maybe suggest that you, and I think this will need some discussion, the board goals, is maybe move this to the side for right now and address the new business items?
All right. We'll move that down to new business.
So new business, the first one on the agenda is Dorsey Road, or Dos Dorsey Road. It's a stormwater drainage concern that we have, and it's not listed under action items. It's for discussion purposes only. And the reason for that is that I'd like to get a feel from the Board of Supervisors which direction they would like to go on this. This has been reviewed by the MS4 Stormwater Committee. They are suggesting going with option B. Scott Hane is here to explain option A and B to the board so that they understand what's going on. And then our plan is to then go to the property owners and address the direction that the board has asked us to take.
Okay. With that, let's hear from Mr. Hane.
Good evening. The option that, well, the existing condition is now being shown on the screen. There's an inlet on the west side of Dorsey, and then there is, I'd say, a collection of pipes that discharge at the end of the highlighted, the end of the highlighted area. They are in poor condition. At best, the middle portion of the pipe has collapsed and now doesn't really have any conveyance capacity. Apparently during storms, the water just sort of pushes up out of the, out of the pipe. We don't have any records of exactly when or sort of how this was installed. We know there's an existing first section of pipe that comes off about maybe 40 or 50 feet. And then we think there's a larger pipe that was put over top of that, of different material, and there might be another pipe down at the bottom that was sort of stuffed into, into that one. Didn't make for the best joints, didn't make for the best conditions, and the material, we aren't certain of. In the middle, it's all metal, and again, it rusted and collapsed. So what we were charged with was looking at options of how this might be able to be fixed. The township's interest in this is that they have the inlets within the right-of-way that collect water from Dorsey, and then it discharges to the west. This is of an age that it doesn't have an easement once you leave the right-of-way. So there isn't any, there's no easement over top of the existing partial pipe that's there. So that's sort of laying the groundwork for you of what we have. We looked at two different options. One option would be, which we called A, would be a pipe as close as possible to what was there. That pipe actually has sort of a big curve to it. There's a sewer main that goes down through. And I think there was another utility, I think there's an electric utility that we also had to avoid as we looked at options. So we have something very similar. That's option A.
Hold on that.
Do you have an option B?
We do.
Okay.
That was, option B was the, was the option that the MS4 committee referred after discussion. Momentarily, we'll show you both of those options.
Sorry. My fault. Didn't put it in the right folder. So, and there is also discrepancy in what the homeowners want amongst themselves. Some want a full pipe. Some want us not to take any trees down, which is impossible to do. So there's discrepancies with the property owners involved. So we have to address it with them after the board gives us direction.
There are large, a significant number of large trees that have grown over top of this pipe in the meantime also.
So you want a recommendation from the board on an option?
Yes. So that we can take it to the property owners to explain what's going to happen.
And the MS4 group recommended option B.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the most economical?
I believe it is.
It is. It is the more economical of the, of the two options. I can, I can quickly summarize them. Option A was extending a new pipe with some structures down to the end point of where this pipe, the current pipe ends. Option B was taking a pipe off the road far enough that we can get to a point where we can daylight it. I think it was maybe, let's see if it, it was maybe 30 feet, 30 or 40 feet, and then simply daylighting that pipe and then removing the damaged pipe and then creating a rock line swale down the hill to the end of where the previous pipe, or the existing pipe is right now. And that was the option that we, as the MS4 committee, all came to a conclusion of. That would limit, you would then, as part of this, go to the property owners and look for an easement for the length of that pipe to the end wall, which again, would sort of limit the township's involvement with this and not have a much longer pipe with, with a greater easement and greater responsibility for the, for the future.
Okay.
Do we know how many homeowners are affected? And how much easement?
I think there's four properties in all that are under the existing condition with the length of the pipe. Until we were, if we go with option B, there would be one, one property owner that would, that would be involved with an easement. Option A would have one, two, three, three or four. Four. Would have four properties. There, there's a fairly significant grade once you get off of Dorsey and you go west. It goes down fairly steeply. There is still some concern from one of the neighbors in particular about erosion and drainage as you leave this, the end of this pipe and you continue down, down the hill. That, that I think the MS4 committee was looking at like it's out of the scope of what, what we were really charged with looking at here.
Any questions from the board? Pretty much have what I need, I think, on this. Any questions from the audience concerning this? Do you need a vote?
I don't think I need a vote, no. I think it's just direction at this point. And it'll come back before you for a decision, which the property owners may or may not attend your meeting at that point.
Well, the option recommended by the committee would be my choice.
Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Let's move forward with that. Okay. Moving on to the next item under new business is the Ahur Park Phase II Plan Project on Improvements in the park. This is on the agenda tonight because I recognize that there has been some delay in getting this project moving. And I think that it's important that the community understands what has happened here. And I'd like to, like to do that, get some comment from the board, and obviously get some comments from the, from the audience. I believe we have some people here tonight from the Bachi Club. So, so with that, could you give me the first slide? When we, we began this project in April of '21. It was approved by the board in April of '21, pretty much right in the middle of the pandemic. By the September date, actually, it says 22, we had gotten some estimates, and the estimates, the initial estimates on the project was $380,770. Because of the timing and what was needed, we, we did order the pavilions right away. And we do have those pavilions in the parking lot out here under, under storage. Transition to 2024, the project construction has skyrocketed. It's, it has gone through the roof to the point where now we're looking at over $823,000, almost $824,000 to build both the pavilion and the, and the Bachi Ball Court. Can we go to the next slide? Just to, you know, for a comparison. Originally, again, we had estimated the project at 38770. We, we requested a DCNR grant for $152,000, and the township match was $228,462. The, when the grant was approved, we purchased the materials. We purchased the materials in '22? Well, actually, I have it right here.
Yes, '22.
February 24th, '23. Purchased the materials a year ago. And, and again, we have them on site here. We also, and then looking to the other side of the page, at $823,992, $140,000 for the materials, we now have a best bid for construction of $572,531. So it's, it's just gone through the roof. Now, to cover the 572, 931, we've, we've requested an LSA grant of $475,000. We'll be hearing on this grant in the, in the spring. Once we hear about the LSA grant amount, we want to, we'll move forward at that point. And at a, at a minimum, the, the plan would be for the construction of the Bachi Court first. If we have additional funds, we would build the pavilion. Additional grants are being pursued if the LSA grant doesn't give us all we need. So we don't want to spoil, well, don't, we can't really do anything from a construction standpoint right now because the, we don't want to spoil the LSA grant. But as soon as we know about that grant, we've been working over the last couple of weeks to develop a plan moving forward. So with that, I'll take any, we'll take, we'll take any questions, any comments from the, but let's start with the comments from the board.
Yeah. I have a question. So is the pavilion that's under tarp in the parking lot, that second photo up there?
No, no. These photos are just graphics. That's all.
Okay.
One's a Bachi Court, one's a pavilion. That's.
Okay. It's more similar to what's out there right now.
Everything is similar to what we have out there now.
Okay. And all the dollars on this slide are relative to that Bachi Court and the pavilion over that Bachi Court?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes. And again, the, the 140, the total cost of the, of the construction materials for the Bachi Court came in about $141,000. And again, we have that, we have that in here. And we, you know, we also recognize that as time goes on, things get more expensive to do. So we're, we're working hard to find a way to move this project along. Any other questions from the board?
I don't think.
All right. Okay. We'll take questions from the audience if there is any. Sure. Yes, you do. That's what you, one of the rules around here.
When you address the board, please give your full name and address for the minutes.
Hi, my name is Mike Shealy. I am the president of the Langs Trabachy League. And probably almost everybody in the room is, is from our league, and we have a vested interest force in what's going on. The question I have on the text, the picture is one court, and on the text it says building Bachi Court. Are there going to be two courts or one court?
Well, there's, there's two pieces of the construction process. There's going to be one new Bachi Court and one pavilion.
When he says Bachi Court, he means a pair, like you have now?
Yeah.
Right. Well, I don't, I wouldn't, I would refer to what, what's out there as two courts.
Right.
So is there going to be one court built or two courts?
Two courts under one roof.
Two courts under one roof.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Awesome. Sure. Step up.
My name is Tim Peachey, dress 129 Park Place. I'm a resident. Question on the bid from Lowbar. Is that recent, or is there an ability to set that back out into the marketplace for rebid?
I would say that there's probably an option to rebid it. I can tell you that we recently received a new bid from Lowbar that increased by about $5,000 over what we had had. So things aren't getting any less expensive to do. If, if, obviously, if we felt that it was necessary in order to drive the cost down, we would absolutely rebid it. But we'll, we'll have to make that decision post the LSA grant award.
Understood. So the majority of the increase then was mostly labor? Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we purchased the materials. We purchased the materials back in early '22.
Right. I walk by them every day.
Yeah. Exactly.
Well, it's a, it's, it's a good endeavor. You know, this is a league that. You know, this is a league that, you know, spans Lancaster County. There are like twenty-three, twenty-six teams, eight to ten players a team, two hundred people. While maybe not as popular as pickleball, you know, it's a, it's a fairly growing sport. So I, I would encourage you to.
You've been around longer though. Bachi.
Thank you.
Yes. Sure.
Patty, Patty Clark, thirty-three, thirty-seven Cochran Drive. I just wondered what LSA stands for? What, what organization is that?
Local Services Account, it's a state funding, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Valerie Fiola and I live at fifty-nine Black Oak Drive in East Lampeter Township. First of all, I'd like to thank the park because we really appreciate the pavilion and the courts. It's wonderful to play here and we always had good experiences, so thank you. My question is, you're talking about Lowbar, but did you ever consider VOTEC or Stevens Trade? Because I know, or study of Stevens. I know they build homes, they have projects. Would it be advisable just to reach out to them? To see if they would pick this up as a project for the students?
We, we have, we have contacted both the VOTEC. We got a flat out absolute, I mean, there's no way that VOTEC could, could do this with students because of their, their school schedule. We looked at Stevens Trade. Do you remember, I, I think I talked to Perry about this.
He has a call into Stevens Trade. They have yet to get back to him. They have yet to get their schedule for this year.
But again, we can't really start on anything until we hear from the, about this grant. The grant is very important. We don't want to spoil that.
Right.
Then, then nothing happens.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
But that good, good idea though. Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, because we had comments from Lancaster Bachi League, there is a commitment of five thousand dollars from the league. That was gotten when this was initiated.
And we appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, those of you that addressed the board, if you didn't sign in, could you please make sure that you do sign in for the secretary for the minutes prior to leaving? Thank you.
Okay. The final comment that I would make is that you have our commitment to getting this project done and finished, particularly the Bachi Court as soon as we possibly can. The, the first point in which we can begin to do anything from a construction standpoint will be when we hear on the grant. And then, then we'll, then we'll move forward. Okay? All right. So with that, thank you, thank you very much. And now we have goals and objectives, right?
Correct. That's your last thing you did.
Everybody has our goals and objectives this evening?
You don't have to stay, we understand.
Well, we do appreciate our audience, I think everybody does want to stay.
We'll take a couple here.
Oh, nice to meet you, thank you.
Hi. Oh, okay. Hi, nice to meet you.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, you have been circulating your board goals for the past couple of weeks.
Right.
As the committees have been meeting, there have been comments provided on those goals. Unfortunately, we already had a meeting with planning and the MS four committee. So that's why those aren't adjusted. These are the, the amendments that I have thus far.
Okay. Well, why don't we continue to accumulate board goals and objectives from the, from the various committees? And let's try to formalize this into a formal document for our next meeting.
We meet tomorrow for public safety.
Okay, okay. And if, if a committee has goals that need to be updated and there is no meeting scheduled, that doesn't mean that you can't get together with the, your committee member and create your, you know, create your own, establish your own. Okay? All right.
So you may want to make a motion to formally table it till you're.
All right. Do I have a motion to table approval of board goals?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries five zero. Traffic Commission report. We had a pretty thin Traffic Commission report this evening. Discussed the ongoing situation with Farmingdale and Orville Road. We seem to be making some progress there with signage in particular and with enforcement. The, we've had a significant, a number of community contacts, as they say. Anything else? I think that was.
I would just add to make the board aware that we didn't, the stop sign was not moved back, that we had discussed that before trying to accommodate the neighbor related to the school bus schedule that would allow school bus to pick the kids up on that location. And the issue that I'm going to try to summarize this correctly is that it's a safety concern and with violators traveling the wrong way and we're aware of that situation, moving the stop sign back creates an even further hazard because it, it puts them in a blind spot that they can't see the oncoming violators and creates an issue for them. So at this time, there has a tent, staff is hesitant to move the stop sign. And the only reason I bring this up is I feel that we owe to the two residents, three residents on the corner there who've been greatly impacted by this doing the best we can to make this situation better. Because I don't think it's where it needs to be just yet. So I just want to bring that to the board's attention and something that we want to keep working on.
I, I agree. I, I think there's more to do there at, at that intersection. The other thing I would add is that I know that Perry has a couple of more signs that we're going to put in the mix there that'll, that'll make it even clearer what's acceptable and not acceptable from a driving standpoint. Okay? Any questions or comments from the board?
I think.
You turn signs are up and the private drive signs up.
Yes, yes, yep.
And we, we do have a, we do have communication to Manham Township for the truck, right?
Yes, we do.
That's another.
We started that process.
Outstanding.
It's, it's in, I think it's in a manager report tonight.
We've already spoken to them. They have no problems with the signage if that's the decision we make.
So that's, that's another positive.
And the traffic classification study is scheduled for beginning of March to determine what exactly, what kind of traffic is on the roadway. Okay.
Anything from the audience on the Traffic Commission? All right, moving on to public comment. Any public comment tonight? Okay.
We got two youth in the audience. What school are you from? We figured. So you're visiting a, a government meeting? Congratulations.
So what do you think so far? Keep things moving along. I'm a graduate of Lancaster Catholic, so I.
You could be him someday.
Yeah. You don't want that. Well, it's good to have you here. All right, seeing no public comment, we'll move on to the manager's report this evening?
Yes, thank you for clearing the room for me. So the projects are kind of in a, in a holding pattern for the most part because of the weather and, and winter season. Farmingdale Road, we discussed that, the, the traffic classification study, the signage and of course, the discussion with Manham Township. The Stony Battery Trail also on hold because of the weather conditions. We already discussed the Hurr Park Phase Two. The Panatoni two eighty-three Commerce, not Park, it's Hub. Staff continues to work on those two agreements that we have yet to finalize for the off-site traffic improvements. We're getting close to the, the verbiage. Susan's working with, with their attorney, so we should have resolution quite, quite shortly. Stormwater projects, really, the AHR Wetlands is completed. We have the sign up. We hope to have some sort of official acknowledgement that that's out there so that the residents know and the reason why it's out there sometime, probably in the spring. We talked about Dorseyia Road. We did have two meeting group meetings, Park and Rec Met and also Public Works. Park and Rec talked about the same things that the planning group talked about. The last meeting that was discussed, we discussed the park and open space saldo change, which will change the way we charge for fee in lieu of parkland. That's in draft form at this point. And we also talked about the recreation park plan, which we need in conjunction with that fee in lieu of ordinance when it gets adopted. DMA is currently working on an update to that recreation plan. It's, it's a bit dated, so that's going to, that's in the works. AHR Park, I did want to mention Noldora Park. Noldora Park, we, is also a park very similar to AHR in that we're probably going to see extreme increase in the cost of that project. DMA has put out some, several options that keeps us in budget and hopefully in compliance with our grant application. Currently DMA is, is doing the design of that project and we're waiting for the MPDS permit to be issued. So there's still work to be done, but that will come before you when we get closer to actual construction. They also talked about the Jacobs Creek Equipment, which we talked about. The Sod Farm Lease we discussed. Then the other group that met was Public Works. They talked about the paving, which is going out for bid next week. Or it's out for bid, it's going to be open next week. We talked about a roadway preventive maintenance plan. Perry has a partial of that and we just want to start elaborating and making that more detailed to use it in the future for future planning. We also are getting an update from our traffic engineer regarding the bridge capital improvement plan and getting, getting improved cost estimates on those bridge projects. Landisville Bridge, which is the one, they call it Church Street, it's Landisville Bridge over the Amtrak Line, is going to be a significant cost that the township is going to have to handle in the coming years. And we are concentrating our efforts on getting that onto a, a tip program and funding sources for that moving into the future because that's a, a number that's not going to be very attractive to the township. We also talked about a traffic signal compliance review. That's currently in our budget, in our budget for thirty thousand dollars. We talked to Chris Bauer from Bowman Company. He's a traffic engineer. And he has suggested that we move forward with that. So if there's no objections, the staff will do that because it's the budgeted item. It's important to get those numbers, get that project underway, get those numbers on paper so that we can apply for grants and have that as a backup for those numbers. We talked about various projects of note. We also talked about the PP and L street lighting. We're at ninety percent LED coverage for our streetlights. The ones that have not been done are the ones that are either under contract or fairly new, under contracts, PP and L, that they won't do them, or they're the decorative poles. So that, that project is essentially completed. Part of that project, they also looked at areas that needed lights, areas that had too many lights. And Mr. Bradonna, the Public Works Director, feels that we're, we're adequately covered in all areas. That's the end of my report unless you have any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? All right. Seeing none. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any, any?
Second.
Okay, there we go. Metal, metal telepathy here going on this evening. I have a motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, second from Mr. Russell to adjourn. All, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.